Lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the great旗帜, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rossford, you call the roll, please.
Aldag, here. Griffin, here. Hubbard, here. Michelle's.
Cousin.
Schlaf.
Here.
Semi Pharaoh.
Here.
Kyo, absent. Bruterly.
Present.
Malik, absent.
Item C on the agenda is approval of the city council meeting minutes from May thirteenth, twenty twenty four and work, city council work session for May fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Schlaf, support by Hubbard to approve the meeting minutes from May thirteenth and May fifteenth, twenty twenty four. So any discussion? Okay, please call the vote.
Schlaf.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Aldag.
Yes.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh.
Yes. Item D on the agenda is free rain participation. We have none. Item E is non arranged participation. There's anybody in the audience wishing to speak to the council? Um, please come forward, state your name and your address and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Not seeing anybody in the room. Is there anyone online that wanted to comment? Okay. No non arranged participation. Item F is declaration of conflicts of interest. Are there any, anyone with a conflict? Seeing none, item G is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
The agenda's motion to be approved by Aldag and second by Schlaf. There any comments or additions, any other info for the agenda? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Schlaf.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Aldag.
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh.
Yes. There are no public hearings tonight. Communication include the updated meeting list. Are any comments or questions about the meetings on the meeting list?
I just, are we just shy of including the June eleventh public? Uh, would that not?
Yeah, that, that, that'll be on the next one.
Got it.
Okay, uh, we're down to reports. Public services superintendent Tim Stewart.
How's everybody tonight?
Good.
Good.
Great. Let's report.
Councilmember Michelle's.
Yeah, uh, has the timing for the RRFBs been checked? It still seems extremely long, the one by the schools.
One by the schools?
Yeah, compared to the other one.
You can definitely check that tomorrow.
Uh, it's been regret.
Yes, one follow up. The, do we know how soon DTE is replacing the sidewalks? Uh, the areas I've seen where they've torn them off looks really gross. And if we have to wait for thirty days after they're done with the whole project, it's gonna be really bad.
No, I got them there. In fact, they replaced some of it on the inner of the street last week.
Okay.
So I've been in touch with them and, uh, we had some issues in the beginning, but they're gonna start being right out instead, so.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Griffin.
Yep, I was just gonna ask, what time does a street sweeper usually go out?
What time does it go out?
Yeah.
Usually goes around four in the morning in private.
Four in the morning, I probably. Okay, thank you.
That way everybody's off the streets and people usually park them, especially now it's on there.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Schlaf.
Um, going back to Mr. Michelle's question, um, on Ann Arbor Street, were you referring to the crosswalk up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, they just, they did that last week. I noticed, I just got back from vacation, but I noticed that's one layer as they did. Um, they didn't do by against it and it's kind of spread a little bit, but, uh, they're gonna be.
Have they poured concrete up at the crosswalk?
Said it.
Okay.
What I've seen this today, yeah.
Okay. Do we allow them to put millings in and sidewalks?
Uh, I, yeah, because it's still temporarily. If it was something that was gonna be long term, it would, I would have.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, was there anything else you wanted to highlight?
Um, we have a new CBL driver. He did pass a test. Uh, so we're working another one, actually, probably looks like about two or three more, but, uh, that went pretty well. Uh, supposed to get, uh, both new trucks in over the next, uh, two to three weeks and we should have that. I'll take care of it soon, so. Besides that, everything else seems to be doing all right. Super job running full. Everything's functional now, so we had to wait for motor for a while for the first run with it's working good.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Uh, community development manager, Michelle, hi, you're. Good evening.
House counsel this evening.
Okay, how are you?
I'm fine. Excellent to see you all are doing well. Okay, uh, before I go into, uh, any verbal updates, do you have any questions for me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, councilmember Michelle's.
Was there any discussion, uh, for the butterfly sculpture going at an alternate location? I raise a question because although it's by the front, that's one of the more secluded spots, whereas if it were farther out, it'd be visible from folks on central and fourth and people on the railroad.
I will defer to the city manager and Josh on that question, please.
Okay, well, I'll bring it up then. Thank you.
Any?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Uh, so we have the CIP under consent agenda. Capital improvements Plan. Is there anything just for the sake of, uh, sharing for the record or any members of the public in attendance, anything notable worth highlighting from that? That stood out to you or?
I wouldn't say anything notable. Everything that would be notable about changes is in the executive summary. Um, I believe we have a few more projects if I remember correctly. Um, the amount of money for our CIP, it, it has grown, um, as far as the funding needs. Um, but with any funding needs, having the revenue to do them, they, they're not gonna all be done at the same time. That would be the thing to keep.
And, uh, my recollection is that there was supposed to be a ZDA meeting at which the, uh, Dexter Community Schools request was possibly gonna be made. Did that happen and what was the outcome?
The ZDA meeting did happen, but they postponed their, the public hearing for the, um, uh, that was, um, requested by Dexter, uh, Senior Center, um, because they received a request for it to be postponed to the June meeting.
To June, okay. Uh, you also have in your report an update about even Annie Boutique has closed and they mentioned that there wasn't enough foot traffic. So I'm just wondering how to reconcile that and maybe other business changes with the consultant report that I don't know if the DDA Commission did, but I know we saw the results of it where it seemed super detailed and we could support X number of businesses and this sector and this sector and this sector. So do you have comments on how to reconcile those two?
I wish I had a really good way of explaining that. Numbers in reality don't always work together. Um, even though we, the, um, we have to remember that the market studies that were done look at the greater trade area. And while there is enough, um, there's enough population disposable income in that trade area to support businesses. That doesn't necessarily mean that a business in a particular location, um, um, will be successful. In a downtown, you have to get, um, not just the income of the population in the surrounding area. You have to find a way that those people are actually coming into town. Um, if you're going to be a destination only, destination only downtown. Um, so if you don't have enough foot traffic in the downtown, you're looking at many ways to increase your population within the downtown. Um, creating and putting on events where we always have that foot traffic. Um, it's a, it's a delicate balance and it's a constant, um, it's a constant process.
So then is it safe to say that staff and I guess other people looking to those market studies are looking at those results in context?
Have to be looked at in context. So if I remember right, um, there was a large number of, uh, um, there's this total square footage for what can be absorbed, um, within the trade area. Um, for retail commercial, and I believe it's based on square footage, if I remember correctly. Um, of that, I think that's a total of square footage. If I remember right, the person who did the study, um, took and determined, um, a smaller amount of square footage would be what could be supported in the downtown based on what we currently have in this area. Um, um, again, doesn't mean that every single business that we currently don't have will be successful. There are factors that aren't contemplated in the reports. Um, what's happening in the economy? What was the, what was the weather like through the winter? Those kinds of things. So when you say, do we take those into context?
Oh, last question, more specific. The fence and the pod like storage at Champion Gymnastics. I reached out to you back in April. Do you have any?
I am working with them. Um, they actually owe me some information. Um, they had through a month of May to come up with a, um, strategy for how they were gonna handle that. Um, and thank you for the reminder because at the end of May now, and then you give a chat to them.
Okay, thank you. No messages.
I think it's just a comment actually on, um, even Annie Boutique, um, and I don't just because my stepdaughter is very much into textile and fashion. Um, and it's not just for Dexter and this boutique particularly, but for a lot of the, um, even towns and bigger, um, fashion industries, there has been a huge shift and movement because of the, what is now known as fast fashion, um, that has caused a lot of these, um, especially of course the smaller, um, boutiques and then even some of the, uh, bigger names in the industry, um, to close. So uh, there is foot traffic and then also there is foot traffic depending on what business it is and what, um, has been in the, and there was extensive research has been done for how the fast fashion has been impacting the industry in general.
Thank you.
Councilmember Michelle's.
Yeah, uh, question on capital improvement plan. There are a number of spots where it says map. And then it has a, there are a number of sections where it says map to show the location of the project, but it's a broken link that doesn't show a map.
Then there either, either isn't a map or we haven't been able to figure out how to, it's one of those um, elements of the plan being in transition from a physical, uh, great looking physical copy into one that's more online that doesn't, um, it doesn't transfer into that physical copy very well.
So does the, the final version we're adopting, does that have all the map links or an insert that says no map here?
If, if the, if there are maps that aren't working or aren't showing up, that anything with a map should be showing up. If it just shows, um, what, what would be the word I'm looking for?
Um, broken link?
Broken link. It means that there isn't one.
Okay, we may.
That's my understanding.
We may want to clean that up then.
Okay.
Cause it's, there's a lot of them.
There's a, this is a, this has been a real learning experience. Um, um, when we when we were interviewing the company, Justin can attest to this, I was very, um, careful and precise with my questions. And I wanted to make sure we'd be able to reproduce what we had because we had such a very good, um, representation or model for capital improvements program. And we were assured that we would be able to print everything out and it would look identical or that if it didn't, we'd be able to work with their program to make it that way. That was not accurate. And so we're, it's, it's going to be a process and we're, we're gonna get there. It may take a few years of, of working this. There aren't any other questions. I'm.
Well, I just have one, I apologize. Um, for the thirty forty-five broad, uh, event on the eleventh, would be a way for the public to submit comments or questions or suggestions outside of me? Like, will there be like a way somebody could submit some online or just email you or?
So people can submit questions online if they would like, uh, email addresses are proposed or provided. Um, there will be an online, uh, people can participate online. Um, we will have an online facilitator who will take those people that are online into a breakout room.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll be, we'll be able to work with them with this game board or puzzle board.
Right.
So that we have all this information coming from them.
Okay, well, I was thinking more along lines of people that couldn't attend either online or in person.
So this is in, this is designed to be an interactive.
Okay.
A session where your, the participants are actually functioning as the developer, if you will. They're designing this like the three D, um, puzzle pieces. Um, uh, pieces that was, that are to represent the world. So they're going to be phone for et cetera. Um, it, it's so, there aren't, there isn't a, um,
Just isn't a public comment type of a thing to it.
Correct. People can provide us comments if they like and we're happy to keep them and share them in the record. But this is designed to be very interactive, um, public engagement.
Okay.
For this redevelopment.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I would, I'm very, very pleased tonight to introduce our new associate planner, Jenna Ellsworth. Um, it's been a great first day. Michelle is less stressed than she's been in three months, so, um, I'm really happy to have her. Um, I think she's gonna hit the ground running and, um, and be prepared to, um, take on this role when I retire in three years, so.
Well, welcome to the city.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, boards and commissions and other reports. We have Washtenaw County Sheriff in the packet.
I have a question about that, if I may.
Yes.
I haven't reached out to our, the usons. I don't know if, uh, Justin received any comment on this. So, I mean, this month's, this is April's report compared to last April, eighteen hundred percent increase in citations. Uh, year to date change is one hundred fifty-two percent. Medical assists this month versus the same month last year, April fifteen hundred fifty percent increase. Uh, even year to date increase one hundred sixty-four percent. Did they provide any comment as to? I know in the past we've had questions about the rate of citations and some people seem to think it was too low. To at least here, it seems there's been a notable increase in citations and I guess a medical assist. Was there any additional comment provided on those?
No, I, I do know that, um, they've been working hard to, uh, fill vacancies, um, and that may be reflected in, in the numbers. Um, but, uh, one of my reports tonight be, um, that, uh, I, I spoke with, um, Commander Flores and, um, we're looking at June twenty-fourth, uh, for the, the work session with the, the sheriff's office. And so that might be a good opportunity to, to speak to them about that.
Thanks.
I have to say in the last month, I have seen them a lot more, um, especially early in the morning, um, on Dexter and Arbor Road.
Yeah.
I'll second that. I was gonna make the same comment. They are busy. I don't know if they're speeding or what they're doing, but they're busy.
They have a separate, please, obviously, because I'm just proving that citations for the, the track driver. And I know that's, uh, yeah, they're playing horny about, uh, speaking of, I'll share that. He said, um, I take. So that.
I, I noticed the numbers also when I was thinking, I mean, I don't know if it plays anything into the HPA stuff with the ambulances, why there would be more in medical assists? No.
I, I, and it's possible.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any, any other comments, questions? Okay. Uh, item J five, city manager's report. Justin?
Sure. So, um, just a couple of quick things. Um, um, we did get our A May, our local community stabilization payment. Um, it's less than it was last year, but getting anything is, is positive. Um, we have a, uh, road, virtual roads meeting, uh, tomorrow, um, that everyone is welcome to attend, um, if they're public. Um, and that'll be talking about, um, all of the projects that we have going on this summer. Um, Josh included an update, uh, to the bicentennial calendar, um, which is three weeks away, just, just under a month. Um, so it's, it's coming up fast and it's gonna be a lot of fun. Um, Josh, I don't know if you wanna hit Zach's comment about, um, especially about the, the butterfly sculpture?
Yeah, so for the butterfly sculpture, we did not consider that side of the building. I think from the get go, when Alpha Metals had reached out to me, we had talked about, I think we really started on the city hall property, um, and I don't know if this initially a part of your question, but we didn't really consider any other locations off, off of the property just because uh, with a lot of the temporary sculptures going in, trying to find a location that's probably suitable for it. Um, one of the few locations I could think of, um, you know, I just don't think the pad would have been, would have been large enough in that, in that area. So we've kind of just stuck with city hall. Um, and we did consider and we, and we mainly just looked near the ramp area because in my conversations with Alpha, we kind of worked just out of talking in that spot. And that was kind of my, uh, you know, what I had thrown out there to arts, culture and heritage, arts, culture and heritage like that spot. Um, and then once we moved on to art selection, art selection committee also liked it, um, near the ramp as well. So we just, it, it just never really came up in a conversation of putting it on the other side of the building.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the city manager report? Councilmember here.
I have a question for Josh. Uh, so Parks and Rec discussed reaching out to Play By Design and other playground company, and it sounds like they're still, we didn't hear back from you about scheduling that meeting. I just wanted to touch base with you that.
Yeah.
Planning on.
Yeah, yeah, and I responded to Mary from Play By Design today and just let her know I'll get her a call sometime this week. I just, this week we have a, a lot of different stuff going on and just when I can squeeze in and I'll make sure to get her a call so that I'm ready for our meeting in June for Parks and Rec for the report.
Thanks.
Councilmember Albig.
Thank you. On the, um, Sunday of bicentennial, the, um, picnic is two to five. Um, it's right now on the calendar, twelve to five.
Councilmember Michelle's.
In the supplement, it said that the, uh, petition for charter amendment was submitted to the state on May twenty-third. My recollection was the guidance from the state was it had to be submitted on the fourteenth. So it, the, the guidance for, from, from the state was that they prefer it submitted ninety days in advance. Um, I, I got it in as, as soon as I could.
Do you have concerns that it won't be reviewed?
They, they, they've already reached back out to me and letting me know that, that they've started their review of it.
Okay, uh, Mayor Kio's report is in the packet. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments. Okay, uh, are there any council member reports? Councilmember Aldig.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna thank the Rotary Club for the fantastic, um, parade and the, uh, ceremony that they put for, uh, the Memorial Day. I had the honor of delivering the city's message and the proclamation on that day during the ceremony. Um, and it was a great ceremony.
Good. Thank you for doing that. Any other reports? Okay. Uh, hey, on the agenda is the consent, consent agenda? Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I move, we approve the five items on the consent agenda. They are all consideration items. Number one, bills and payroll in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Number two, resolution to amend the social district, add high line spirits. Number three, acceptance of Alpha Metals Butterfly Public Sculpture donation. Four, amended twenty twenty-four hardship guidelines and five, adoption of twenty-four through twenty-nine capital improvements plan.
My second.
Incentive journey has been motioned by Hubbard, second by Aldag.
Point of clarification, that the, um, amended social district is as in the supplement, not in the packet. Correct?
Uh, the map, correct.
Motion by Hubbard, second by Aldag for the consent agenda, including the map in the supplement for the social district to add high line spirits. Item two, under the consent agenda, uh, please call the vote.
Aldag?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes. We have no unfinished business, M one. Under new business, M one, discussion of public safety facilities, site design budget, budget review.
Sure, so, um, we've, uh, continued moving, moving through the process with, um, Parks, Architecture and Cunningham Limb. Um, and David Gassen has, uh, come today to, um, find an update to all of council on, um, where we're at in the process.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be here with you. Justin said we're gonna do a little update. Primarily, we're gonna look to get feedback on the alternates that we looked at several times now. Some answers that have been given, but we've provided you with, um, listing and the cost of those. Little bit of an update, um, exterior, uh, design, if we could go to that. My show, one of the alternates was arches over the bay doors, the five bay doors. But we're gonna take this chance also, but update you on a couple of things in terms of exterior design detail relatives and primarily driven by. We're gonna cover those. If we could kind of just go through those, Josh, that'd be great. And then if you have any questions along the way, anytime, just let me know. Um, I'll notice first of all.
And so sorry, did, did, sorry to cut you off, David. Um, and, and updated, this, 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 um, presentation is in, in your supplement on the table.
So this is, uh, with the added image. I'll point that out when we get going. Uh, but you'll notice mostly about the exterior renovation or exterior rendition here is a color palette changes. We had a, a much more white or cream colored palette previously, but we'll lean more towards red, looking at the downtown, uh, street paper, other building material colors. We try to use colors as the primary way to introduce, uh, details so you can see it is, uh, there is a base color of red and overlaying structural color that has some column still in the front here. Uh, you can see him here, here, here. The region that runs along here between windows doesn't change anything about outline. So there's a di- different color of, of brick. Um, and I'll just remind you again, you go to the next slide. The, then you can see here on, on outline, same kind of thing, like two colors, base brick, um, the header above the window, the sofa window remain that limestone rock color. And, but actually stay there for a second, sorry. Um, I wanted to mention about the brick as a gem. So in this area, which is the after that space, big open garage, that's a steel wall, like we call it, called, most of those six solid base range. And that's a, we call it a sea brick. So it has that brick look on the outside. It's a through color, through by color. You'll see the same on the inside, except we're painting. Put on the living side and office side, same kind of material on the outside, but it's a cavity wall. So it's a different kind of construction. She introduces a higher level of, of insulation for performance. I just wanted to draw that again to your attention. A couple of things on this side, uh, pointing out again, the alternates, we'll get to those. Uh, this roof previously was shown green, uh, that vegetation has been removed, but you'll see it's right here. So this is in the project and budget numbers that we're tracking now. But you'll see it's right here. So this is in the project and budget numbers that we're tracking now. This remains an alternative here. The reasoning was this is the front door, the entryway, and to have a roof there, we felt aesthetically it would be a little displeasing. Small area, so we included that as part of the project. Landscaping is being developed, so this is also sparse, so you're more likely to get the building versus landscaping. So there is. For vegetation along Alpine and certainly along Main and down the drive down to um the parks as well. You know, the next one. This is more on the straight east street view elevation. Something we'll see at anything to look a little bit, that red wall, the heavy looking red wall on the right bottom. That is a retaining wall. It's gonna be a segmented block, basically type of material. Um, that'll be laid up like masonry, not forward single wall perfectly. It'll have a little better scale to it in terms of how it looks. That does turn a little bit more and go down mainstream, which you see in a little bit of this.
Well, with that, I have a question. There a design decision why the lintel isn't extending past the boundaries of the doors? This is giving very nineteen fifties. Whereas most of our downtown, the lintel extends. Over to the edge.
Are you referring to this element here? Well, on the first, I guess it did you on. Yeah, on the side, sorry. Reason was basically we're trying to use the coloration or difference in coloration of block. Uh, of brick to show some detail, and as I mentioned, the background is red and over. Arching part of the structural element brown, with blood drops in between it. Uh, so here, here, and everywhere that occurs, that paint will be projected out into that brown element would dissect what we're trying. Creates a strong element, what looks like a vertical pier. Uh, only created by color. To be separated by that. Same thing uh across the the top, the second floor. The reason it's different than it all points out to is um the windows up here, instead of the long continuous line way down here. Um, we wanted to create more lower people where the building meets the ground. So that it was segmented on the second floor, but not on the first floor. It's. They kind of a traditional approach or in terms of how you set this. The sill of window is aligned with the water. Perspective of Alpine, I guess when you see more there is how that mechanical lung protrudes up. A lot of that is parapet, we have a vegetation sitting down below the top of the wall. Or underneath that down, some rated mechanical room, and in front of that, and it's not shown, will be a landscape. Um, material to soften how that presents it. So it won't feel as high as that, because it will be somewhat um. Yes, in front of that will be landscape, it will be softly. Oh, and same thing all along there. And what's not shown is there's some here guard rail. Now for that, right now, there's a guard rail. We're gonna use reuse as much of that as possible, the same kind of material, which is also from which my control will cross here. A little down here, probably gonna do the same thing at the terrace walls, just to protect or kind of separate that area from a public way. We'll reuse as much of what they're now and supplement the same thing to that. That's more your straight on two dimensional. Elevation, same view of Alpine Street. But we'll do a advantage going down. Alpine. And we're looking at the pure elevations, two dimensional. Alpine, the reason I've shown is this is all the elevations. This part is not seen from Alpine, that fell as long in the back and that. The paint wall run, and so this is the kind of this silhouette of I am the building that I probably dropped down. And park level elevation, again, using that same idea of. Multiple masonry colors, again, you can see the piers, other kind of created in some language or architecture. It's a very flat wall, but the coloration differences. The joints on the wall for control of the way the basement moves is gonna set up that and look so it doesn't seem like such a big white wall.
I have a question on that. So there's window, are there was windows? What's above the large red squares?
These are windows here, 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 here.
Uh huh. But there's one that doesn't have a window above it?
Yes, that's um the backside of the mezzanine. And that's where the SEA compressor goes. Benefit from having a window, there's this room that's housing cloud and which the compressor from. So there is an option when we get to alternatives, I was pointing out. Here, you have good questions. Looking at moving the compressor to over here. Which moves the noise further away from the living area. So this would that be on the window and not. If the alternate to add it. Mezzanine selected.
And that would extend the mezzanine across the back of the base.
Uh, you only would add another section roughly a hundred and seventy feet of mezzanine, so mezzanine right now is about here. And if we add it, the other one will be here. So you add that section of mezzanine. But you still be blank here, that way you can get the deep apparatus, the full depth of the bay. More aligned with the the apron on the mainstream. That was the reason for considering it.
I just wanted to say the visual balance of that seems off. It's all, I understand there might be a functional reason for it.
Uh, we we agree, and we would like the 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 alternative to add the. Mezzanine and is the byproduct of getting storage and moving sound away, I mean, the balance of the look uh will be achieved.
Couldn't it also be spandrel less?
It can, yes. And and we're using that as a good point, too. We're using that same technique. On Main Street where we have the three full windows on the ground floor, one on the upper floor. And you could, you'll see that it's more of a tinted gray window, that way you can't tell, well, that was fake and that was real. That same approach could be used here all all across there. With every windows all across the back sides. Is that a direction, maybe council could add some direction to do or not do that? If you choose or not choose that ultimate, they add mezzanine.
Like adding the.
Add the window in, just so it kind of completes the look.
Yeah.
You wanna go back to the main street, I'll point out those other full windows. So on. This level. This, this, and this. And this, oh, this, 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 the whole window, and so is that. So they they'll have a slightly, slightly detectable. Is that, you know, is it really a window or not? Because when you have a window open, light coming from the inside to the out, you'll see it's a window. You'll never see that in the. It's a spandrel.
I I'm sorry, what was that word you used? It's a what?
Spandrel.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's a. It's a screen to the, it's basically a painted film on the inside of the window.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
And that is the west elevation, again, using the same sort of technique. This, this is all. Below the. It's all one plane, separated by coloration difference. And what you see above this dark line here is beyond. So that's the stair, not the part of the administrative halls. Need to get away.
Councilmember Michelle.
It doesn't show so well here as it does on the perspective, but then since it's this. Slide, is there a reason why the parapet wall is continuing across the? The living quarters? It's it ends like five feet from the front facade. And it's gonna be from a very visible entrance to the community. People able.
Perspective view from Main Street. Did you refer to the wall here, but if you roll down a few more graphs?
Yep.
So um this element right here returns. So um the proposal from the left doesn't look like a wall flapping degrees. It has some feel like it is something, could it go all the way back for sure? Good, that would complete it, but. We thought this did what we were intended to do, which is not make it look like a wall flapping degrees. And settle less costs than they need to hold. The back of the stairs. And that. How much is the right amount? We wrestled with that same thing when the whole front of the parapet. On the west side, as it presumed, kind of way down to the drive. Next, that's brought by planning commission as well. I don't know if anybody will remember that. We we treated it um and took it away from the very west side, but it remains at the upper level. Is that really objectionable? I I think it's a technique that's used quite quite a bit, and I think it's. Not very noticeable as an issue when you have some return on it, you know, how much return, that's questionable. And that looks like about four or five feet.
Okay.
Okay, if you could scroll.
Um, a second, David, um. Josh, can you unmute Doug, please, or Chief Armstrong?
I I just wanted to. Sort of get in line that when we get to the alternatives, I wanted to make a couple of comments. Thanks, Joe.
Oh, okay.
One of the alternatives that you'll see in the list, we talked about a couple of times. We looked at um slightly differently because of colorations that we've now kind of rotated toward. Basically, we're introducing arch element. Over a flat opening. So that's the application. Uh, of that arch, and this all of it takes a little liberty to look at, how did that? Aesthetic work appear, just adding arch over the openings didn't seem to be. Uh, thoughtful, complete idea, so we introduced. Two elements, and that's it's the same kind of secret, so it's a masonry unit stack. And then an element with the olive color in between. So eventually get into the effect that there's an arch opening with a frame opening. Of nasty material as the arch. The next view. Takes a more simplistic approach to it, same arch. Same pier element in between the doors, just all the same color. And that is very, very similar to what we were using as a design all along that. More creative. Here divided between doors. It um, we wanted to show it again, we didn't think it was as satisfying visually as the one prior to that, but. Um, we'd like your input. And on that, and then if the decision is to do arches. And we have an answer on both questions, arches, yes or no, or this version with arches or the other version of arches. Before we go to the alternatives, in the event you choose to do the arches, can we decide or? Get a feel for what it on makes your backyard? Where this period element is all in color, where the period element has a detail based on coloration.
Anybody?
I think A first struck me.
Wouldn't you say A? People?
A, so. Option A, page seventy.
Why says option A? I apologize.
So the one that has the separate color, but. I don't know. Were you saying you guys, you also preferred option A?
Yeah, we need to add a little more attention to the detail. When we're doing something.
I mean, honestly, when I looked at them, I thought, oh, yeah, we're gonna get arch doors. And so I didn't even notice that it wasn't an arch door. So I think the effect works.
How much is adding the arch doors?
Oh, real large doors?
No, doing what you. What are you proposed here?
The arches itself are thirty six.
On page seventy eight.
Oh, sorry.
Is thirty six thousand dollars.
Is it both A and B?
Yeah, either one.
Okay.
It's just the the only difference is the coloration of the masonry in between the doors. And it gives you the effect of the detail, but it's only done by changing one color to the other.
But then A looks a little busy, too.
Yes.
I was thinking that the same about A, Jamie, that it's a little busy looking. And I think that overall adding the arches period improves the look of it. And. I'm not sure it really matters beyond that, but. All my thoughts, yeah.
Mr. Michelle.
Are, so the question you posed was what makes us happy? Um, I'll pose the question of. Are all of these additions putting us farther over budget?
Yes.
Okay. Then then I'm happy with no arch.
So. Are you, are you all set going through the different options?
Yeah.
Okay. Doug, Doug, did you want to comment before we start going through and talking about the 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 different options and how we want to proceed? Oh, you gotta unmute yourself.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, out of the list, there are two that. Really do have an impact on operations, and I just wanted to to call those out as. Certainly uh top two priorities from uh looking from an operational standpoint. And those two are are the mezzanine. Change or addition. Because we've made significant compromises with regards to the amount of storage we have in this, as we've gone through different iterations and as we've. Lost access to the lower level. And just walking around the station today and looking at the lower level and as we're moving things out. Uh, it it just became even more clear that having that additional storage really. Does make, will make. An important impact on just our ability to to manage. Equipment and and things that we have that that may not be deployed every day, but that we need to have close and available. And secondly, that move. Shifts the two longer bays a little more to the center of the station, which makes exiting. Uh, significantly improved, because while having a longer bay on the very west end. Might uh. Uh, house an apparatus in the station, it's gonna make responding that apparition apparatus out of the station very difficult. Uh, with uh, as you can see from this drawing, that west end. Uh, as soon as you come out, you have to start making a turn to get back towards the opening out onto Main Street, and. I guarantee you that. Someone in the heat of the moment is gonna turn a little soon, and we're gonna scrape the whole side of the truck uh on. The exit to to the bay door. So operationally, that. That mezzanine move is something that's important. The other operational. Advantage that I or benefit that I want to call to your attention is the snow melt. And I know that that's a the an expensive option compared to some of the others on the list. However. We really run into problems with getting the snow right up against the building away. Uh, what? Either has to happen is the trucks with the the snow plows have to get right up against the building very carefully. And not damage the doors, which means they they don't get right up. To the building to get uh the snow away. And. Snow accumulating right there when the doors open, it melts, and then when they close again, it. Freezes, and we end up with little ice pools right where the doors open and close. And finally. So that they can't, because they can't get their snow blades up close, they end up salting very heavily in those areas right up against the building. And that definitely leads to long term maintenance expense and. And damages the doors and uh ends up looking less. Finished. As as those doors rust early due to the salt. So those are just too operational. You you know, as far as the roofs and and the other. Items on the list, those were the two that really struck. Uh, stuck out to me from an. Stuck out to me from an operational standpoint. And I just wanted to share that and answer any questions as you consider and discuss those.
Thank you, chief. Okay, um. David, just real briefly. You can you explain exactly what it is where the direction we're giving you, how this is going to be used, what the impact of the decision tonight will be?
Yeah, the intention tonight is to get your feedback and direction on the list of alternates we have now. And if we should pursue them further than today. It may be some or maybe all, and at a future time you could take more off. Reasonings present themselves.
Okay.
What we're hoping to do is focus in on what we're going to finish designing and documenting that will mean something.
Okay, the. Is there? Are we impacting our our cost as far as design costs and stuff? If we said, let's look at all of them. I mean, I'm not saying that's the case, but.
They the one that will most likely impact the cost.
I don't, I should rephrase it. The cost of doing the design, not necessarily the design in the implementation, but the cost of the. Non recurring engineering, the work that you would do.
Yeah, understood. So for us to continue engineering, most of these will have a cost. If you choose not to continue, then the cost goes away.
And shift, okay.
And the ones I think that would be most impactful. That really require work is the first one, extend the north wall foundation, or that would be impactful to engineering. Undo it later or to do it twice, one with it, one without it, you have to engineer twice. I would say the same goes for enhancing the roof of framing for the second floor. Future over the decon area.
Okay.
We'd be doing it essentially engineered twice.
Got it.
The other ones have cost implications to them, but not as much to do it and undo it and do it twice.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I guess I had a point of clarification from someone who remembers the contract details. I my recollection is that it was a percentage of the overall project, not on an hourly basis. Is that an incorrect understanding of what the contract was?
That is correct. So the the cost of the fees, as I designed in the different phases, schematic, design, development. Construction documents, as alternates continue, they get filled to the percentage of completion. So right now, when DD, we stop alternates. Completion of DD won't be built for the engineering and the work in construction documents won't be built higher. As long as we are doing work, we'll be through the percentage of the fees of work that we do.
Okay. I I'm sorry, go ahead, councilmember Griffin.
I just have a question. We've talked in the past about DVA potentially making some sort of contribution. Do we? I don't know, Michelle, give us an ask or Justin. Has there been any? I don't know, reliable confirmed, so I don't know, and would that contribution of the DVA? And does that would they change with any of these things, or is that would that be going towards something else?
The 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 other challenge there, though, is that the the other thing that's not being factored in is the cost of burying the power lines. Across Alpine and. I'm willing to bet that whatever the DVA can contribute is going to get eaten up by by that power line burying cost.
Doug did or Dan, did you have a question?
I thought somewhere along the line, we were talking about the DDA helping us with the help Alpine Street improvements. I know I don't recollect the power line.
Yeah, so I mean, Michelle, you want to handle that?
So. If you think of the power line going around this.
So the Alpine Street improvements is three hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. Does that include? The power line?
No.
So so the power lines is, where is that cost included? No, but I mean, do we have a line item on the budget for?
We don't know the magnitude. We have a few utility expenses, anticipated expenses included in soft costs, but not in the construction.
Okay.
And that number, I think, is moved around a little bit, or the timing of getting that number moved around. Based on the scope, and I think the way DT is looking at it originally, we're looking at something maybe not simple, but. That was within one division or one department. And now I think the scope of what happens. Cross Alpine is including another division or department within DT. So that timeframe, which we're looking at three or four weeks. Is grown. I just don't know how far yet.
Okay. Okay, so we are still, I'm sorry, are there any other comments? We are still on the discussion item. For the for the items that are listed for the alternate options. How do you wanna, how do you want to approach that? We want to get to a consideration item under M two. But. I don't know, I'm asking for suggestions. I mean, we could go through and start with the whole list and vote on them item by item. I got one nodding ahead, yes.
We'll be fastest.
Okay, let's do that. Um, can we do this quickly, like a show of hands, just informally, since we're on the discussion item? Or do we want to do a vote? And we can do that also.
Maybe 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 we start with with a motion a second.
Okay, why don't we get a motion for all of the items and then we'll go through them one by one on an amendment basis?
Are we moving to M two?
I apologize. Yes, moving to M two. Why don't we have a a motion for the first one on the list? And then we'll make amendments to add other items as we go down the list. Is that okay?
David has something.
Cause I could add a little context to the discussion on. The building on Main Street, eighty one forty is in in general, the same price we talked about in March. But it's high sixty five thousand dollars higher. So that tells you we're eating into potential alternative. The Alpine Street improvements as compared to our March number that we're using is our benchmark, as I say. Is about twenty seven thousand dollars less. But in context, Main Street is about thirty eight thousand dollars more than what we're talking about March. So if you're adding onto it, you're adding onto the top of that.
Okay.
Hopefully that. Was helpful just to understand.
Understand, but to be clear, right now, what we're talking about is choosing which items we're going to go forward with potentially. Do design and bid on not and which ones at this point we may strike completely and never to return to them.
That's what I'm hoping.
Okay. Okay. Uh, okay, are we also, David, or is there anything else that you wanted to add or?
No, I can add description line by line if if it's needed.
Okay, did anybody else have any other items under discussion?
Okay, I guess. I'm sorry, moving on to discussion or to the action there. With respect to landscaping plan that came out in the supplemental packet. The burning bush are considered invasive species in Michigan, so we shouldn't be planting those. The little leaf lenden down in the bottom, only my experience has been only does well if it gets irrigation. So we should find another species that doesn't require irrigation. We should endeavor to plant all something besides maple trees. I love maple trees. I grew up with a bunch of maple trees. I live in a town with maple surface. But we're already overpopulated with the maple genus and species. And it looks like the space for planting along the street is not wide enough. It looks based on the scale of other things, only about five feet. It really should be at least six to eight feet. And the area along the ramp to the top, we shouldn't use stone for mulch as it looks like it's showing there. It won't retain moisture for the plants, which means either they'll die prematurely or we'll have to spend a boatload of money watering constantly.
Justin, can you can you unmute himself or? Uh, Mr. Wheeler, did you have a comment?
Yes, just uh, not again, I'm Scott Wheeler with Cunningham Limpers. Be there tonight, was not feeling the best and didn't think I should show up. In consideration of the alternates, we're proposing them to you as alternates. It is our preference in order to make the job more desirable to bid. To make the bidding process as easy as possible on the subcontractors who would be looking at it. So in addition, do you wish to proceed with? Any of these line items or not, it's also, do we just simply incorporate them into the base bid? Where we're not bidding or burdening the subcontractors have to bid so many alternates. That would be the. Most desired. As a case, a good example may very well be those arched elements over the. Apparatus bay doors. Um, the final numbers are not going to differ too much different than what you are seeing from us right now. And it would be our preference that if you want to see them, don't make them an alternate, just include them in the base bid. So I guess I'm complicating your task a little bit tonight.
Okay. Okay, um. Moving on to M two, consideration of public safety alternates. I'm just going to run through them. Okay, so is there motion to extend to include as an alternate option, extend North Wall Foundation debt?
Would be a no, I would.
Okay, so if we don't do this, this is no elevator, right?
Right now.
We 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 can, it's just more expensive.
Okay. Hearing no motion, move to is there a motion for facility alternate option Alpine Street improvements?
These are the parking spaces.
Can we get clarification again on what that exactly means? I mean, it is the biggest one on there and it's not very descriptive.
It's been carried is what we're calling an alternate for a long time.
Yeah, sorry, I know.
But I'm just trying to clarify, we don't think it's alternative. We've just been lining that as an alternative, so there's a separate. It is integral to the success of the project. It includes adding marketing, moving some utilities that are there. Adding a new sidewalk in the work around. The DT, not DT work, but work around that. It's rather essential to the success of the project. I guess maybe it's wrongly called an alternative. It's really a.
Yeah, I I agree, David, that I didn't realize that the parking and the utilities was an alternate. I thought it was the plaza and some of the other enhancements that was included in that because we really. That that's critical to have that that parking and access to. Uh, to the main administrative area of the station.
Councilmember Hubbard.
That was my second question was what the chief thought of that, so I would. Add that to your list, Chief Armstrong, of the ones that would impact the operations.
Yes, most definitely. I I. Had an incomplete understanding of what was contained in that line item and would agree we've. From a a planning and meeting standpoint, whenever we've gone over design, we've assumed that is there. Because that is is pretty critical to the function of the the rest of the building.
Okay, then I would move we. What what is it exactly? Include the Alpine Street improvements alternate. Option. I'll I'll second.
Okay, um, other discussion, councilmember Michelle's.
Does this work if the utilities aren't buried?
Yes, there's a scheme that will work. It's it's not a big deal. It's a matter of moving poles and guy wires.
So I just want everyone to be aware that it's going to be more than three hundred twenty four. It's going to be at least four hundred, and if we bury it, it's probably going to be five hundred thousand, half a million extra.
This was one of the items that we highlighted as a potential to to fund, like we said before, from DDA. And also from streets, not necessarily from the same budget. It is parking on Alpine Street. There was a comment from a person in the audience at one meeting about the loading at River View. And also the handicap access, so those would be the items in there as well. Is there any other comments or questions about the Alpine Street improvements? Okay, please call the vote.
Michelle's.
No.
Schlaf.
Yes.
Aldag.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Semi Faro.
Yes. Motion passes five to one. Next item for our facility alternate options is the decorative arches at the bay doors. Uh, is there a motion with a designation for which option? Okay, hearing none, no arches. Plaza for the facility alternative options, plaza paving at corner of Main and Alpine. And what's the default if that doesn't happen?
A simple sidebar, as it is here, it's continued down here.
And then just a green space.
Yeah, green space. We have an ADA curb cut to get across Alpine Street, but it wouldn't have that plaza or the tree with the curving around it.
Is there a motion to include the plaza facility alternate option? Okay, seeing none. For facility alternate option, green roof over the decon slash day room area, is there a motion? Okay, seen done. Alternate option, park level parking, lot paving. Is there a motion for, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to add a little definition to that, currently there's about a third. Closer to twenty five percent is concrete, the rest of it is compacted stone. Compacted stone would be the area that would be paved. The additional area that's currently stone, not paving, without paint.
Councilmember Griffin, there's a plan for Mill Creek North. Yes.
You mean the park?
Yes.
The playground?
Yes.
Yeah.
So is there, is part of that plan including potentially parking improvements or that's not being considered at all?
I think we've only talked about the like the playground structure that's physically on the park. I don't even know if that parking is considered part of the park or not, for Josh or Justin could.
Right. I apologize, I didn't mean to. Is that something, that's something we could do in the future, though, along with that improvement as well, I would assume?
Yeah, I mean, that's a name that could be done at any point. If 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 there is the funding to do.
Absolutely, yes. Councilmember Hubbard.
But speaking of that funding. Um, so potentially, though, that could be, could that be something that would come out of the parks budget or the streets budget? I guess it's in the streets, it's parking lot. I guess it's in the streets, it's parking lot, but I don't know, other budgets?
Uh, i- it would, it would either be roads or general fund.
I think it could also be something that could be added to future real no consequence.
I'm sorry, could be added what?
Could be added in the future, no consequence to the project.
I understand. Okay. All right. Okay, uh, there's no motion. Uh, extend the mezzanine, uh, for the facility alternate option, extend the mezzanine slash support space in the bay.
I move we add that to that. Second.
Motion Aldag, second by Hubbard, to include as a facility alternate option, extending the mezzanine, and support space in the bay. So any discussion? Okay, please call the vote.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes, motion carries five to one. Okay, uh, facility alternate option, enhancing roof framing for future second floor expla- expansion over decon area. David, can you, indicate what, can you show on the drawing what that is, what we're talking about?
The, uh, single story element on the main street, where the decon kitchen area is. This element right here, uh, was previously planned as a future training or expansion on fire services. It is the idea, when we remove that, maybe we make this roof structure a future floor structure, not just capable and handling, loads, uh, roof foot, but handle the future second floor on top of it. So it would be a beam structure in here, the next structure that will be a floor in the future. An enhancement, as a face, uh, picture doing that would obviously have a multiple cost, but a nuisance associated with as well.
Okay.
So, question, um, is it possible to add it in the future?
Yes.
With that in mind, I'd like to ask the chief, um, understanding that it would, like, it would likely cost more, obviously, to add it in the future, just because of cost increases and nothing else, correct? Like, no other structural things?
Adding in the future would be all about structure, it wouldn't be.
No, 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 but I mean, would it be, would there be additional costs other than general cost increase of, materials and like?
Yeah, yes, there would.
And how much?
The complications of vacating it, tearing off what's there, it's not like you're adding to the top, you have to remove what's there, it's a roof structure. Put a new structure down as support floor.
Okay.
So it would be significantly, like, three X, four X, and that kind of.
Okay, and then with that said, um, Chief Armstrong, um, I know this wasn't on your list of one of these alternates that would impact operations. Uh, pers- I mean, it wasn't on your list, but I could see an argument, for it being on the list, is that something you would agree with, and is it just not on your list because it's not an immediate impact? And i- is it something, you know, that would potentially be helpful in the future, and then the last question may not be for you, but in general, the things that we might add there, like the training, facilities that we're talking about, could that possibly be something that would go at a different DAFD location? So that we're not carrying the complete cost of all of this?
There's a lot to unpack, thank you. I, I would a- agree with your initial assessment that it, it certainly is an operational piece. But recognizing that the cost of, of doing the roof structure now, along with the cost of adding, that future space on is probably means it's, it's at some point in the future. So it is why I didn't focus on it. Understanding where we are overall in the budget and that, every addition we could put in to preserve future e- expansion, uh, would be great, but may not be affordable. Uh, that being said, there, there's significant utility to having a training space there. And we've designed the conference room, on the end, current end of the building, on the second floor to, sort of marry with that space and turn it into a very functional training space. Uh, it would be a training space that's larger than what we have at either of our other two substations, which we've outgrown both of those already and find it difficult when we, uh, want to have an all department training, or especially a training that invites other departments or other people in, uh, we just, currently don't have a space that could accommodate that. So I, I think there is value, I, it, it's hard to say, whether that value is, is worth the, uh, the cost right now. Uh, although, as David has indicated, or, or, I don't know if it's David or Scott, but that there's a significant increase in, in doing it later, but there, there would have to be significant, budget available to even consider that room in the first place, so, um, I don't know if that's, helped, uh, or, or muddied your, your question.
I, I have two follow-up questions.
Sure.
Um, I'm not sure if it's you or David who will be able to answer them. Um, first one is, could, if we added this alternate, for that future expansion, I mean, I definitely see the value in not having it be three to four times more expensive and disrupting, everything, um, but is there potential for it to be something other than a training space that would, be helpful for operations, or is that pretty much the only use that we could see going in there? And let me, let me ask, then let me ask my second question. My second question is, I know you said you've outgrown the other, the areas that we have currently, and I know we, this has come up before, but just for the sake of this discussion, can, can you clarify whether or not this space that we're sitting in would be adequate space? Size-wise for training?
Um, probably not, because when we, when, when I'm, when I'm talking about training, I'm, I'm talking about, what, what are, are at least four hour and often eight hour or, or ten hour classes? And usually they're seated at tables and, you know, currently, if we wanted to do something with our whole department right now, we need to seat thirty people. Plus, you know, there might be a couple instructors, and if that was a training that was opened, in concert with our neighbors, it would need to be even larger than that, so I, I think that, uh, your, your current chambers, um, probably wouldn't accommodate that many tables and chairs and, and folks.
Okay, and by neighbors, you mean the townships?
He, well, or other department, you know, Scioto Township or Chelsea Fire Department. As, as it becomes increasingly important or increasingly necessary that we work closely together. Uh, it becomes important that we train together as well.
Okay, I think that's all I have.
And, and as far as other uses for that space, I, I, you know, I, I defer to, to David, but I think we could, uh, y- you know, with some modifications, it, it certainly could be, something other than, than training space that could alleviate some of the other, uh, things that we cut out, earlier.
Okay.
We, we could, we cut out some admin space, we cut out, uh, dorm space, you know, it would, uh, it might take some finessing, but that, th- there's limited option for expansion on this site, other than, um, either to, eh, underpin the back wall and, and be able to extend a little bit back, as we've talked about, for the, the elevator or stair, but it would also be if we were going to add additional office space or additional dorm room, that would be one direction to go. This would be the other direction.
Okay, thank you.
Add a little bit clarity with the chief would say. So what else would it be, uh, you alluded to, we cut things back with five offices in the initial program. And now we have three, um, fully eliminated to reduce square feet. The idea would be this corridor, this big one, down the avenue area, this space would be dissected, so, or continuing into this big trading space. And then you get your two extra offices, so it was planned with the potential.
Okay.
So the program, whether it's in five, ten, twenty years down the road. Thankfully, I think the conference training space that they're now, uh, adds is an overflow, uh, from the fire marshal's office. So there's some, some flexibility, but, you know, doing that room as a future training gets you extra two offices.
Okay.
Councilmember Michelle's.
When I've seen training events at other stations, uh, jointly, there's a significant amount of space taken up for parking. If this were a training space, would there be space for people to park here?
None on site, uh, would be within the city.
Okay, and I've, I've generally also seen them bring their fire trucks in case.
Visiting apparatus or whether it's to two other stations within the authority or neighboring agencies, you don't need that. That would be a great thing, combination, it certainly will happen.
Okay, so any other comments about the, about the, uh, enhanced roof framing for the future second floor expansion over decon? Okay.
No, there was no motion yet, was there? I was.
I'm sorry, you're right.
I mean, I'll make that motion, all things considered, I'll make the motion to, um, leave the enhanced roof framing for future second, floor expansion over decon as one of the alternates in the budget.
Is there a second? Okay, motion fails for the second. Okay, uh, facility alternate option, snow melt system at twelve feet outside the bay doors.
I move that we add that as an alternative.
Is there a second? Been motion by Aldag, second by Griffin, to include snow melt system at twelve feet outside of the bay doors, as a facility alternate option. Um, any comments? Mr. Schlaf?
Um, I think if that is, is a, a big deal, um, I think asking a public superintendent to ask some guys maybe to, do a little better job of getting the snow out maybe by hand, or, we buy something for the Dexter Fire Department that they can, you know, work together with the DPW, to get it out away from the door, and then they can come in there and they can follow that. I think we could save some money by, um, the Fire Department and Superintendent Dexter working together to get that snow out of there. And not putting down a bunch of salt that's going to ruin anything.
Councilmember Hubbard.
I have a question about that, since I'm not, I'm not well versed in things, um, like you are. So my understanding of this, this would be a one-time cost that would alleviate this issue. May, tell me if I'm wrong, but if we had, if we budgeted later or now, or in the DFDA, DAFD budget or wherever to get another piece of equipment, that's going to be a recurring cost, so I'm just wondering, I mean, I, I, I'm fine with either way, I'm just trying to figure out which one is truly the most cost efficient.
There's, if I could just add.
Yes.
So there's that maintenance of equipment or maintenance of the system, there's asset preservation of the system.
Correct.
And then there's operational savings, the system doesn't work versus people doing the work. Like you say, it's kind of like, which, what is the right answer?
Councilmember Michelle's.
So the way the, the contract between DFD and the two other communities were done by intention was that the maintenance of the grounds, is paid by the DAFD. So at Multi Lakes, there's a contractor that comes in and pushes snow and does the lawn. At Webster Township, there's a contractor that comes in and pushes snow and does the lawn, and there's a lot more lawn. So there's, there's higher costs if you look at the different things there, so the costs to, to clean the snow and maintain the landscaping at this, if we follow the, the, the same process and the same outline as those others, we, we don't send our DPW out there anymore, we send the private person out there. Um, I have experience when I worked for Mount Pleasant, uh, in the Parks Department, I was the guy who walked with the shovel, to clean it away from the doors, so the folks in the nice warm truck could push it there. And I just did quick math, sixty-five thousand, paying someone fifteen dollars an hour, four thousand three hundred and thirty-three hours. Um, so two years. Well, assuming we're going to get snow, yeah. I, I was exaggerating. Yeah, so I, I, it'd be great, but we don't have money. Um, there are ways that it can be done, and it's to the, to the city directly, it's not a cost overall to the DAFD, it'd be consistent with, um, other practices, a- and I, it is possible writing the contract for snow removal to say you will hand shovel this. Um, it's done for sidewalks and other sensitive areas.
So for clarification, are, are you saying that the DFD contract now, or, the process now, and I don't know, maybe this is a question for Chief Armstrong, that there, we do have a contractor that comes to clear that snow?
Not for ours, we have the ancient contract from nineteen eighty-four, when Back to the Future was a thing. But the other two facilities, when they came online, they purposely changed the format of the contract.
So would it apply to the current station or to, only to a new station?
That, that each, each, each city and township has its own lease agreement. And our lease agreement is from the original DAFD.
Gotcha.
We do it.
Yeah, 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 understand. So, Councilmember Michelle, you're suggesting that when we do the lease with the DAFD, it would include things such as snow?
And landscaping, general maintenance, yeah.
Understood. Okay. All right, are there any other comments or questions about the snow melt system at twelve feet outside of the bay doors?
Uh, ju- just to clarify, Zach, tho- those contracts are held by the, individual municipalities, uh, they're not, it's not a DAFD cost. They are contracted out, but Dexter Township pays to have the snow removed and the grass cut, for Dexter Township Station, and Webster Township does the same for, for their station.
But it's charged back to the DAFD as part of the rent.
Not entirely, no, I mean, I guess it's, they're, they're structured differently at each, at each municipality.
All right, well, that's something we'll have to identify, assuming if, if this doesn't end up passing, so. All right, um, let's see, any other comments, please call the vote.
Griffin?
No.
Hubbard?
No.
Aldag?
No.
Michelle's?
No.
Schlaf?
No.
Semi Faro?
Yes. Motion fails one to five. Okay, uh, the last, the last thing that we had was the, uh, faux windows at the rear, of the building for the movement of the mezzanine, um, the, uh, mezzanine item did, was accepted as an alternate option, um, is there a motion for the faux windows at the rear of the building for the mezzanine?
Fairness for clarification on that, from David.
Yes, please.
So given that we've moved the mezzanine, you would propose that we would have a faux one on the far right side, looking from?
No, it would only be in the middle.
We would still need one.
Just one in the middle.
And what is it?
I'm sorry, it's in the middle now, it would move to the far right.
To the far right.
We'd have four windows that kind of, I think would be more balanced than it currently is.
Right.
But I think the rhythm would be better if you have all five.
And what's the cost of a?
Um, Scott, I don't know if you heard that conversation, did you chime in on if we added a full window on the north elevation, where currently the air compressor room is? Instead of just being twelve minutes makes you to be.
Someone's, yeah, someone's going to surely remember about a month and a half ago, I said be about five thousand dollars more, so, I will stay with that five thousand dollar premium.
Okay, and, and to be clear, even if the mezzanine doesn't move, we, we could still do it at the second set of windows and, address the concern.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'll move to do the faux window and wherever it needs to accommodate that.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Any other conversation, discussion? All right, please vote.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelles?
No.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aldeg?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes, motion passes five to one. Okay, does that cover everything? Okay, anybody?
One more, uh, I would recommend also changing out the honey locust, uh, it's a great tree for growing where nothing else grows, but since we're putting in soils and all that stuff, we should be able to plant anything, the reason why is honey locust, although they'll grow everywhere, there's a significant amount of dead wood that requires a lot of maintenance every two years or so. And it'd be best for us to minimize the maintenance of city trees.
Thank you. All right. The next item is discussion of eighty fifty, David, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion of eighty fifty Main Street next steps. Justin, can you walk through that real quick?
Sure, so, um, it's it's been a little bit since we've talked about the building formerly known as Hotel Hickman. Since we had that conversation, um, staff has spent some time and reached out to, um, some folks in the trades, um, to get an idea of what doing, um, either public restrooms or bring it back to white box ready might look like. So, one of the folks that, you know, was was good enough to meet me out there and and provide an idea of some potential figures um, was Sam Ashley with Cunningham Limb. And, uh, we had talked a little bit about, um, that facility during our, uh, budget work sessions and kind of one of one of the the thoughts was to potentially do um, public restrooms. And so, um, I wanted to bring back the information that we had today and gauge council's interest in, you know, continuing forward on that, on that path based on uh, some of the estimated numbers that that we've gotten. And if council's interested, then really, I think the next step is to to, um, either put out an RFP or reach out to maybe OHM to get some proposals to do a design at eighty fifty Main to either take it back to White Box or proceed with, um, public restrooms or split it down the middle and do public restrooms and, um, part part White Box.
Okay, discussion, councilmember Michelle.
I guess I'll I'll jump up in the pool first again, um, we definitely need indoor plumbing for people downtown, it's kind of sad that we don't. I would also caution though that having a bathroom facility is more than just having the facility. It's gonna be at least two hours of staff time to clean it, probably three a day, so before we commit to that I, we need to make sure that we're able to properly maintain it, um, on a daily basis. Whether that's also DDA.
Councilmember.
Yeah, one of the things that I think would be nice there is having the restrooms with sort of a welcome center that has not only information about town, but potentially display cases that the Historical Society can put, um, some things there. Um, it seems to be a great opportunity since it's a historic building in our downtown to take multiple advantages of it of how we want to represent our city and have, um, have multiple things that we we can do. Um, so I, with some of the conversations I've had around that sort of vision of having a center that people can come to grab information, see some things of the city on display. Potentially a piece of art, any displays and then have access to the restrooms as well.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Um, councilmember Alde, I'm not trying to be rude, but I have said all of that in a meeting before, so I second everything that you've just said. Well, I first did. Kidding, I think it's a great idea and I'm glad you brought it up again.
Councilmember Griffin.
Yeah, I guess. What I, I'll start by saying, I guess, what I don't want to see, I mean, that's easier to identify, I don't want to see us continuing to lease it. I just don't think that's what we should be spending our energy on. Uh, I think public restrooms makes a lot of sense given the location. I agree, and I think others in the community agree about the nod to the historic nature of the building and this visitor center idea, I've also seen that mentioned in other places. Uh, what they're going to be looking like, I'm not sure, um, I also agree with, uh, Zach, though, that the cost is gonna also include this ongoing maintenance, so then a question, I mean, we have, obviously, we're all very sensitive to our budget. I I guess I'm wondering about the time sensitivity of this in light of where we are financially on other projects, how much of a priority this is, what does it cost the city if this sits vacant for a year or how would we time that so that it doesn't incur additional costs in the meantime, yes, I have some questions about that.
Yeah, so I mean, um, it's it's sitting vacant right now. I think there, we 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 added a space heater over the summer or over the winter. Overall, the the ongoing cost while it sits vacant are fairly minimal. The the DPW team does visit it on a on a rotating basis, um, just to make sure that it's it is kept up. But I don't think there's been, you know, significant effort that that has been required there. We we do also, um, as I've noted in the in the packet, um, pay for the portable toilets um, in Monument Park, which I would imagine if the this gets converted, those would go away and, um, maybe a portion of of the of that savings from the portable toilets goes into, um, the cleaning of the public restrooms, um, here. But, um, through, um, the budget work sessions, um, I did include, um, some dollars in, um, under parks um, for the conversion. Um, if if, assuming council was interested in that and they wanted to go that way. If you wanted to put it off, I I think it can be put off. But it seemed like something that that folks were interested in.
Anything else?
I was just gonna, so I guess to follow up on that, so we right now have three hundred square feet, choosing to use public restrooms and a janitorial room, three hundred square feet, the white box. I think one question is, I don't know who would work without this visitor center idea or display of art or whatever that would look like. Is there an intermediate where you would need less, you know, square footage for that, that other component and can you get how many more restaurants could you get, I guess, that's one question I think too, like, do we think we want more than two? And how much does that take away from this extra space and could be still do what we want to do in the extra space if we had more restaurants?
Okay, other comments or questions?
I would like to to have the restrooms there and I don't think we need to be renting them out anymore. I think that a visitor signed up some kind of, but the most important aspect of this is despite nice restaurants. And for everybody to come to this.
Councilmember Michelle.
Have these associated values, are are they accompanied by poking at the building, so this building, we had some problems where the foundation went down six inches or something, it didn't go to frost line. This is kind of in an ancient building, no, okay, so.
This is this is a very, very high level estimate, wa- walking through, taking pictures, okay.
I would caution that it's going to be higher because a lot of the structure is really close to the ground and that's not good with wood. Um, so I wouldn't be surprised if there's significant structural items that we need to brace ourselves for as we go on this.
Okay, thank you, uh, councilmember Hubbard.
While I don't disagree with councilmember Michelle's on that in any way, um, it this sort of, my question is, what what are, is this discussion, what is city, what is the city staff asking for us to in this discussion, I mean, is it, is it time to just get an RFP, just to see, does that really cost us anything? If we decide to delay it a year, is that problematic if we put it out now and then ultimately don't do it, I mean, is there any harm in doing that? And in asking for proposals? Okay, then I I would, that's what I would like to see sooner rather than later, like now. Do we need a motion for that?
You don't need much for that, do you?
So, um, the the purpose of the discussion tonight was was to to get a general idea of what what council was thinking here. My next steps would would be to reach out to some vendors and and get some idea of what what the design piece of it would cost, maybe reach out to OHM and and see if they have capacity to be able to to do that piece of it. Um, and come back with some some numbers.
And crawl under the building and look at everything, so everything.
I I'd agree, I, um, I'd be interested in knowing. We're gonna have, I mean, three hundred square feet doesn't sound like a lot, but it is gonna be a small room that we're gonna have in there, so. I mean, maybe maybe it is just a visitor center, maybe it's like I thought, was there something in the packet about a discussion with the historic side?
Uh, so, so I did reach out to Bev, so so there was kind of made during one of our discussions on this about, you know, what Historical Society thought. Um, and might they have interest in in the building? Um, and so I I shot an email to Bev Hell, just to to gauge interest and see, you know, if if council went the route of either selling or wanting to demo the building or get get that building offsite. Would the Historical Society have interest? And, um, the response from Bev was, uh, there there might be interest, essentially, and or, um, if we 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 don't want to see that building demo, so maybe if there could be space made on another site that the Historical Society owned, where the building could be relocated.
I I was thinking more of if we were gonna have an information center, could be someplace that something from the Historic Society could be there on display or something as well. I'm sorry.
So just to add to that, that I have had some individual conversations, not with you know, the in the capacity that Justin has reached after the Historical Society, but with different members that they would be interested in seeing something displayed there as well.
Yeah, I kind of keep on thinking about like the rest areas of the highways, a couple of bathrooms and a map and some brochures and stuff, and maybe that's all it is, maybe that's all we need, I hope. Is there any other questions, comments, any other info or things that we want the city manager to look into? Okay. All right, uh, item and for discussion of the draft mid-waste management contract.
Sure, so, um, we received, um, a copy of the the draft contract from Waste Management. I got that copy of the draft extension, um, shortly before, um, the the pack was was prepared. Um, and so with the the idea that, um, the existing extension expires at the end of June of twenty twenty-four, it's pretty pretty quick turnaround. So I wanted to, um, at least get this in front of council and have council be able to have eyes on it um, as early as possible before for bringing it back. Where staff is, still needs to meet with the city attorney, um, to review, because, uh, the form of this extension looks very different from previous, um, extensions. And so, um, it's it's longer, much more details, and we want to make sure that we have sufficient time to have the city attorney's input on it. But a lot of the the kind of concepts that we're that we discussed with Waste Management in developing the the draft extension are presented on page one fifteen of the packet. Including, you know, for a five-year extension, four percent each year. Residential service would essentially remain the same. Um, although there there were some things that were that that they put into the draft extension that um, would change to like the types of materials that would be available to be disposed through through recycling that, um, we want to get addressed with them. And then, uh, transitioning the commercial side of billing from city staff to Waste Management directly. And so I wanted to be able to put this in front of council and, you know, get any questions or comments. Um, and hopefully you get those answered before for bringing it back.
There are questions, comments?
Do you have any more details about this bagster implementation?
Yeah, so, um, uh, a few years ago, um, they were selling bagsters at Hackney, which is basically this, um, this large plastic bag that, um, you can put construction debris or other sorts of things in. And, um, folks called up Waste Management and said, hey, you know, my bagster's ready to be picked up, you know, when can we schedule it? And Waste Management's response was, well, you're outside of the service area. And it turns out we were just outside of the service area. Um, we were essentially one sip code away from the the area that that they were servicing, so, um, we we asked them, hey, can you just extend it one more sip code? And as part of this, they said yes, that that they would be willing to do that. Um, and so essentially, um, it's it's not a service that folks would call the city for. Um, they folks would, you know, buy a bagster from Lowe's or Menards or Home Depot or wherever, um, fill us with whatever construction debris or whatever they might fill it with.
For Hackney Hardware?
Or or Hackney Hardware, um, and then, uh, and then schedule the the pickup from Waste Management directly.
You also had a question about the time I am inclined to encourage them to stick to seven AM. No sooner than seven AM is the feedback I received and my personal feedback. I mean, I think by us are coming, they're they're at least coming by six forty-five, doesn't seem like that big of a deal. It seems like in the past, we were holding ourselves to seven AM or there's some, I I couldn't find the exact ordinance, but if we have some other ordinance that other contractors are struggling.
Yeah, we have asked them to when we get projects going on to come in early in the morning at six AM, like we're doing a redoing a street or something, would that be okay?
Other contractors or the waste?
Because the Waste Management, like when we were doing Hudson Street, we met with Waste Management and said, could you guys come here first at six, because the contractor starts at seven?
Right.
And then talk to all the residents.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine if it's not a regular occurrence, then there's notifications, I mean, I think it's I think it initially came up because they were coming earlier than seven and our website says have your stuff out by seven, and so if people are going up and that, although if you live there long enough, you likely know when your truck is coming.
Mine switched from six AM to ten now, which is fine, because I put it out the day before, but it's changed by three.
A lot, wow.
I'm sorry, councilmember Michelle, so you had raised your hand before.
Yep, uh, under one F. Waste Management on the website does say that thirty-two gallon toters are available, and I would love to see that in there, because there are a lot of people that would take a month and a half to fill even the bigger size ones. Um, they can do it, they've got them in stock, they may not want to do it because it's more logistically challenging.
Yeah, and 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 the thirty thirty-two gallons were initially rolled out, um, as part of the rollout of the total program. Um, Waste Management has tried to back back away from the thirty-two gallons because they they found that, uh, when the arm picks it up, it goes to dump it. They tend to lose the the cart in the truck. Um, but, uh, in in from staff's opinion, it, you know, folks were delivered thirty-twos, they they wanted thirty-twos, they should still be able to get.
Three A. As I read that, would no longer allow the schools to use their alternative recycling program, so I'd want confirmation of that. Uh, under four A, uh, to to Roman numeral, it's at eight. Our current contract, I believe, has that if it's, if the totter is stolen and you file a repeat for a police report, they pay for it. Um, as opposed to if a bunch of hooligans came through and stole them all out, this doesn't have that in there, so we'd be responsible for repairing, replacing something that got stolen from us. Four B, as I read it, does that include organic pickup, um, throughout the year, it doesn't have a start or finish date? So our little paper bags, as I read that, I like that, I don't know if they intend to do that. Um, I would have the question of what's the penalty if they continuously roll up at six or six thirty in the morning before they're supposed to, is it fine, do we not pay them that week? That'd be great. Do you, as I read six C? It doesn't. It doesn't appear that we have. Really strong grounds to deny an extraordinary adjustment. They can just say there's a war in Ukraine.
Yep.
We um. We voted to increase our dividends and buy back a bunch of stock even after the war started, but we want more money because gasoline is probably going to be more expensive.
Yeah, that that's that's one that 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 stood out to us as well.
Um, the other thing that I would point out is you referenced here, the four percent year-on-year increase, yeah, it's a relatively small number, but if you go from two thousand. Twenty twenty-three, that exceeds the rate of inflation in all but three years. Which include the two COVID years that were that were coming out of now, so. That seems excessive to me. I know things cost more money, but people aren't making four percent more money year-on-year generally. People with with pinch budgets are gonna be feeling that. Those are my thoughts.
Council member Hubbard.
Um. I just wrote on it, or C, the bulky waste item. Has that? In prior contracts, has that included our spring and fall cleanup days?
Yes.
And be, so is that taken out of this?
I I I don't think it was intended to.
Okay, because I don't, that I think people really like, especially given that of just, you know, was not even ten years ago. That you could do that all the time, anytime.
Yeah, what 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 they have asked, what um. They have asked, and we've talked with them about it a little bit, is um, if we can move it to a regular bulk item Monday.
Yeah, I think that would be fine, as long as there is that option twice a year. I think people would be okay.
Agreed. Okay, any other comments or items for the city manager regarding the waste management contract? Okay. Next item on the agenda is non-arranged participation. Is anybody in the audience? I'm assuming Miss Samuel and Mr. Stewart don't have comments, so is there anybody online? If so, please. Raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none, uh, item O, council comments. Uh. Council member Michelle.
Uh, yep, I'm gonna again say that if we're gonna have bicycle lanes on the side of the road that's not separated. The impact of painting those a solid color in the U S, we go with green, is tremendous. I I can't tell you how tremendous it is at the impact on bicyclists and the drivers at managing speed and making it safer. So if we're gonna have bicycle lanes, we ought to, we ought to budget for including that. I know it costs a lot from the consultant, but if we're adding D P W staff, the machine to do it itself isn't that. That high, so um, I would encourage looking at that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Griffin.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't notice this earlier, but on our capital improvements plan, the cover page. The aerial shot is really cool, but it also predates even the connector path. So I don't know if Steph wants me to make a motion to change that. Um, and it sounds like Josh is some some cool drone thingy, um, however, you would get a picture, I think it'd be nice enough. Get a picture of that.
Thank you. Council member.
Welcome.
Council member Schlaf.
No comment.
Student representative Bruterly.
Just one, um, May thirty-first, this Friday is the high school's commencement ceremony, um. Putting my bias aside, I think we have an incredible class of seniors, so if you have free time on Friday night. Or want to celebrate a senior you know, or want to listen to me talk more, um, I would suggest.
And if I may, could you share with the folks where where you and your sibling get to go next year?
Uh, yeah, we uh, have decided uh, that we will both be attending Columbia University. And I'll be majoring in political science, so I very much appreciate this opportunity, but.
Yeah, congratulations, and by mean, hear you talk more, are you the commencement speaker?
Uh. We've actually expanded it in the past couple of years.
Yeah, she should know that I was there last year, so. Okay, cool. Congratulations on that as well.
And council member Hubbard.
No, no comments, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, does anyone have any items to add or items that they want to discuss further about proposed agenda items for future meetings? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A seven. Moved by Aldag, second by Schlaf, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, can stay.